My time, it's now seven o'clock. Nora, are we all set to start?
Yes, we are.
All right. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll?
Mr. Didich.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Here.
We also have with us tonight our board planner, Mr. Wise, our board engineer, I'm sorry, Mr. Weiser, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Mr. Lagana.
Very good. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is open to the general public. With that said, are there any members of the public that would like to present on anything which is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing no one come forward, we'll start with our agenda, which is application number Is the applicant present?
We are. Good evening, everyone. John Witschisgala with the local management casino, Whipster Witschisgala and Taylor. On behalf of Troy Hills Village Partnership, pleasure to be here tonight and to see everybody live. I've had a live meeting in Precipiny in a while, so it's good to be here. Chairman, would you like me to kind of give a summary of what we're doing here?
Sure, and then we cut over to the application completeness and any...
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. So just real quick, we've got a minor site plan application that's before you. It's in the Troy Hills Village apartment complex. We have an aerial that our engineer will refer to later. This is an application that's really geared towards enhancing the recreational amenities for the residents. We've got a couple of old tennis-sport courts out there that haven't really been used for any meaningful purpose in years, so we're looking to convert that area into a playground, also to create some more picnic areas with benches and grills and some other amenities for the residents. With those changes, we also enhance the ADA provisions within that area, including ADA ramp and a couple of new ADA parking spaces that didn't exist previously, obviously to meet the code and provide that for the residents. The other aspect of this application, we do have a bulk refuse area that's within the apartment complex, and we're looking to relocate that. I know there are a couple of comments, and we might be telling about modifying that to address any concerns that were articulated in terms of setback and the like. So that is, that's really kind of the sum and substance of the application. I have Anthony Pacino here with me tonight. He's the project engineer, and I do want to express my apologies to my client, our main property manager, owner, onsite every day person is Seth Adler, and he called me this morning to tell me he was diagnosed with COVID over the weekend.
Oh boy.
Light symptoms, though, so that's a good thing. But he could be here this evening, but I suggested to him that I thought we could proceed accordingly, and I need to reach out for anything I can get him on the horn.
I think we sympathize.
Yeah.
Don't see a problem moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right. With that, could our planner just go through any of the waivers that were requested and the completeness?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our report, which I believe everybody has, is dated May 23, 2022, and I would direct everybody to pages three and four. In terms of the completeness review, we do recommend that the application can be deemed complete. There are a couple of outstanding items that I would like to have the applicant address. First of all, was notification required for this application?
It was not.
So that footnote one falls away. We had asked that the applicant provide photographs of the areas to be improved. I guess that's the aerial photo we see in front of us.
Correct.
Thank you. Next page. Footnote three is a waiver for item 19 existing at proposed storm drain. We have coordinated with the engineer's office, and we do not object to that waiver. Item, footnote four, there is a request for a waiver for site illumination, since it is an existing site, and the improvements are all proposed to be within the existing developed area. While we don't object to the waiver to this request, we would like the applicant to address any lighting needs that might be impacted by this development or required by the proposed improvements. The rest of the waivers are 21, which has to do with landscaping, 28, traffic study, 29, environmental assessment report, 30, tree protection and removal plan, and 31, photographs, again, that's a sort of a duplicate. For those waiver requests, again, given that this is an already developed site, we do not object. So with all of that as background, once again, we do believe the application can be deemed complete.
Okay. Any members of the board have any questions about the review of waivers? All right, then we'll deem the waivers acceptable. Please continue.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this time, I'd like to call Anthony Pacino. I'm assuming he's sworn in, and we'll go through qualifications here.
Yes.
Minor site plan committee, okay, thank you.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please.
Anthony Pacino, F-A-C-C-H-I-N-O. Work address is 258 Main Street, Melbourne, 07041.
And Mr. Pacino, can you please provide the board with a brief summary of your educational professional background and licenses, you hold?
Absolutely. I graduated from Stevens Institute of Technology in 1998. I have a professional engineering license since 2003, a professional planner since 2006, and a licensed land surveyor since 2017. I testified before this board before. Spent quite some time, but I have testified before many boards throughout New Jersey. All my licenses are current.
Any questions about this witness? All right. Mr. Matt?
Looks like Mr. Matt had something, but I think it was...
All right, very good.
I was gonna ask him, when did you, what town does he testify in, when? Just kidding.
Anthony, I'm just gonna turn the floor over to you, because we're short.
I have a question, Council. Is he gonna be providing planning testimony or just engineering?
Just engineering. There's no, there's no variances required, so it's more just engineering.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So this evening, I'm gonna be discussing briefly the exhibit A1.
Did you already mark that thing?
Yeah.
Has it been submitted previously or no?
This is not. This is actually an aerial photo, taken from near map. It's basically existing conditions today with our property line showing in yellow. It depicts the locations of where our proposed improvements are going to be. It's dated, doesn't have it, oh, it's dated, the aerial photo's from June of 2021. It's on an 80 scale. And if you just kind of, when you, I know you got your pointer and stuff, if you're gonna just describe the area and just show everybody on this side where we can see? Yeah, I'll try and sit down and try and use my pointer. Okay. The other exhibits I'm gonna be referring to are part of the site plan set, so do I have to?
Those have been previously submitted.
Okay, so those are gonna be sheets three and four of your set that you have that are dated, that are revised, last revised 5/18/22, prepared by Casey and Kelly. Okay. So to begin, everyone knows that this site is known as Troy Hills Road Village. It's Block 71812. It consists of 33 acres parcel. It's located in our five residential district. The site has access from two roads, Route 46 westbound, as well as Vale Road, which is located to our north. The roads are connected by a main central road, which travels right through the center of our site, that is called Troy Hill Village Road. The site is fully developed. There consists 41 buildings with associated parking areas throughout the entire property, and there's about, there's 1,200 parking spaces, exactly 1,200 parking spaces. To our east is two complexes. One of them is Park Lane Apartments, and as well as Baldwin Manor. To our west is the Central Middle School and some residential, single-family dwellings located there. To our south are the retail spaces located along Route 46, and then to our north, just across Vale Road, are single-family dwellings. Our proposed developments were divided into three different areas, Area A, B, and C. Area A, which is where the pool area is, is located on the westerly side of the site. Area B, which is what Mr. Witschisgala stated about, the dumpster, the refuse area is located on the northerly side, and then C, Area C is located on the easterly side, where we're gonna do some restriping of parking. So referring to now sheet three of our set, this is, we're seeking minor subdivision approval, sorry, minor site plan approval, to provide amenities for the current residents. The areas of interest, like I stated, this is an interest, area of interest A, we called it, which is the pool area. So what we're proposing here is a area for a playground area. There's a underutilized lawn area now and some existing concrete area that's unutilized. We're gonna actually put a play area there. Along with the play area, we're gonna put some fencing around the play area. The fencing around the play area is gonna be chain link fence. You have six foot high on the south side, along the parking, the existing parking area, there's gonna be four foot chain link fence, and then along the westerly side that abuts the other amenities is gonna be a six foot high solid PVC fence. Along the, where the parking area is, we are actually restriping a couple of parking spaces to try and comply with ADA a little bit better. So by doing that, we actually lose one parking space in this area that we're proposing a new access along the road. We're providing new access, so when we re-strike this, we are losing one spot there. To our, I guess there's also to our south side of that same area of the pool area, there's a large area that's gravelled right now. So in order to provide some amenities, the applicant is wishing to provide a number of picnic tables and some grills so that people can have barbecues out there while, during the day. The hours of operation for the pool area as well as the amenity areas are gonna be from dusk to dawn, and the...
Dawn to dusk.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, sorry. Dawn to dusk, I'm sorry, I apologize. So daylight hours, dawn to dusk, my bad. And, yes. We are not proposing any tree removal, and we're also, because it's only from dawn to dusk, we're not proposing any new lighting other than what exists there today, which I, yeah, okay. Seeing if I missed anything. Okay. Now I'm gonna refer to sheet four of our plans that were submitted to you. Okay? And these are the other two areas of interest. So going to interest area B, which is located, if you recall on the aerial, located in the northerly side of the property, and just passed, just before Vale Road, before you get to Vale Road, there's an existing concrete area that's located at the end of the site. Right now, that area is just designated with some caution tape, and that's where the people, the tenants drop off some bulk disposal stuff that they wanna get rid of. And what my client is wishing to do is to propose a dumpster enclosure, an enclosure, refuge enclosure, so that they can, and it's gonna be a masonry enclosure, six foot high with chain link fence to access it. Now, it was brought up in the review letter that that accessory structure may need a setback of six feet. We will be more than happy to revise the location of it so that it complies with the ordinance and not require any variance. But it will be a enclosure, a masonry enclosure, that should withstand the, you know, everyday issues with trucks and stuff, not destroying it. Lastly, for Area C, this is located at the west side of the property. It's just a very large paved area, and adjacent to the building, we would like to stripe for three more parking spaces. So we are planning on doing that just by simply striping. It's all paved today. We're not changing any drainage patterns, just would like to gain three more, actually, we're gaining one additional spot, I apologize. For Area B, we are also losing one parking space there for, to allow for dumpster, a dumpster to be placed there, and then the bulk stuff goes inside the dumpster enclosure. There's a number of individual dumpsters that sit out on concrete pads, which makes it easier for the trucks to get to. So we wish to lose one parking spot there to allow the expansion of the dumpster. So with that said, the two, A and B will lose two parking spaces, but our area of interest C will actually gain an additional stall for the entire site. So we're required to have 1,200 parking spaces. We're actually gonna have 1,201 parking spaces. Sure, I thought we were keeping it just at 1,200, Kansas City. Well, the additional third space allows us to be up by one, but if, you know, that's not necessary, we don't need it, but we wish to stripe it for three parking spaces there. So lastly, we will provide all necessary soil erosion measures during construction. We don't anticipate a lot of heavy equipment or soil movement issues. It's a pretty level area where we're working, and so the SCD permit will be filed. I want to note that the fire department did not have any comments, but he did want us to keep fire department access at all times, which we will more than happy to do so. I think the fire department actually also just made a comment about keeping dumpsters 15 feet away from the buildings during construction. Yeah, correct. It's just construction related, so we will comply with the fire department. I think that concludes what I have to say. If anyone has any questions?
Okay. Any questions from our professionals? Mr. Canziano?
I see you submitted a revised plan on Friday. I didn't get a chance to review it, and it looks like quickly looking at it, you provided the circulation plan. Is there any increase in impervious surface with the sidewalk, Area A, the playground area, play equipment and the like?
No, actually, we're lucky that there's some existing concrete area that we actually are removing in that pool area, and the playground area is gonna be all wood chips or rubber mulch, so it's gonna be all pervious.
And that has to be attenuation surface?
Yes, yeah, the impact, impact.
And we asked for the details, some of the detailed additional information?
We will provide details, yes, absolutely. Actually, we have a detail on a new set of plans, which I believe you do have.
Okay. And you'll need to, it looks like it's over 5,000 square foot land disturbance?
Yes, so we, SCD permit.
The SCD permit. And so it's a control plan with the permit, so the revised plan should have the SCD plan with our set.
Correct, yes.
That's all I have.
Mr. Canziano, you had to ask the question whether we're gonna phase this or how we're gonna proceed with it. And actually, we did have a comment letter that went in with our revised supplemental, so it does respond to each of your comments. Our game plan is to proceed with this as a one-phase development, the issue, however, being supply chain issues, availability of equipment and materials and so on and so forth, so we're probably looking for a little bit of flexibility there, but that's intention is in this regard. There was a comment as well, and we don't take issue with any of the comments, I'm not sure if it was in your letter, there was a mention of bonding for the onsite improvements. I don't think we're under the new bonding law that we're required to bond for onsite, except maybe a destabilization bond and whatever is otherwise required, but...
Yeah, we'll leave that during, for the township, during construction, if they need to bond. That's a standard comment we have.
Yep. That's what I assumed you meant.
And probably the stabilization, if there's no stormwater.
Mr. Weiser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We really don't have any comments that haven't been addressed. I would note just for the record that on page four, which is our zoning chart, we have a number of items where it's information not provided, and that's the nature of this application, is that there are three separate areas of interest, I think you called them, around the edges of the property. We did then not go into a normal analysis of the development itself because it's already been approved, presumably, or predated any need for approvals. But other than that, we don't have anything additional to add.
All right, very good. Any questions from the board members? Mr. Mealy?
You mentioned six foot high fencing, I believe in two different areas. Is the four foot height not adequate?
The six foot high fence, well, yeah, four foot is adequate, but we decided to do the six foot high fence so the children wouldn't... So the six foot high fence is supposedly gonna be placed there, you know?
There we go.
That happened once before. So the six foot high fence is just on the other side of the playground area. It really will stop from kids from climbing over it. You know, this is more for toddlers and stuff, so that's that. The six foot high, we really don't want any children going to the west of our site, because that's where the single-family homes are and everything. And then along the street is where we decided to put the four foot high chain link fence so that police officers, if they're driving by, they can actually see within that area. Right now, that area is vegetated with a lot of invasive species, so we're gonna clean that whole area up, and it's gonna, it's gonna look really nice.
Thank you.
Mr. Matt?
So this has nothing to do with the improvements you have, but as long as you've got basically masons on site, and by Advance Auto Parts, there is a one small section of sidewalk curb ramp that is not present because your clients own it, and it couldn't be built at the time. And it's like the one missing piece along the whole shopping center frontage and then Advance Auto Parts. Any chance you could throw that in while you're at it? I'm pretty sure it's on private property, not the DOT right of way.
So it's on our private property? We're just talking like one?
It's, yeah, it's literally like five feet, the size of a curb ramp.
I mean, if it doesn't require state approval, you know, because that would be a...
I understand not needing to go to the state, not wanting to. If you can do it without having to go to the state, I'm pretty sure that Advance Auto Parts did put it on their right of way, so I think that would put this on your right of way.
Okay.
But if you could do it, just a request.
My client's not here to discuss it, but it doesn't sound like it's a big deal. Sounds like it's just a quick fix.
That would be great. I think that came out during the sign requests from earlier, so, okay. One question from me with regard to the placement of the concrete pad as the accessory structure. Could you show me on the overview, the aerial, where is that being placed?
That is being placed in the, yeah, the, what, in northerly, northerly corner of the property.
So it is on the border with the residential property?
Yeah, this is the park, you know, the park lane.
Well, yes.
And then the residential homes are to our north. They're significantly far away. Just, yeah, I could give you an idea of how far. The closest house is 400 feet away.
Yeah, the homes are far, but, I mean, is that their property, though, or?
You know, I'm not sure where the property lines are. Yeah, that could be part of the residential, but again, right now, there is an existing, that's what they do now.
There's an existing?
There's, there's, there's an existing concrete slab there with all bulk stuff that's gotta be picked up. So by us enclosing it, I think we'll just definitely make it a better looking, better looking area. There is a fence located in that area as well.
Okay. I mean, what you proposed makes it definitely a cleaner, better maintained area.
Yeah, I mean, there's a six foot high fence there now, so the enclosure is only going to be six foot high, so you're not even gonna see it. It's not gonna be any different than what's there today, for the residence side.
Thanks for clarifying that. Mr. Didich?
So real quick on this exhibit, there is a traffic flow pattern. Is that a new pattern or it's existing one?
No, that's existing. That's just showing how the fire truck still has access through the parking.
And from my understanding, so how do they go back? Do you have to turn back or is there a flow forward for getting out of the area?
To get an, they exit, they get, they exit out to the, to the north. I'm sorry, to the east.
I mean, they just move forward, right? There is a...
They just pull up.
It's not shown here, but I can, okay.
It's not a dead end.
There's no dead end.
They pull up and then they can go out to the main road.
And on the other exhibit, the other side of this one?
The pool, the pools?
Pool one, yeah. So the ramp you're building there, is that a new ramp or existing one?
That's gonna be a new ramp. We wanna make it handicap accessible up there. We're gonna, like I said, we're gonna clean that whole area up. If you went out there, you see there's all overgrown vegetation, so it'll be nice to have...
Okay, so it will better, it will provide better access to the pool as well as the...
Yeah, the pool right now has a different access, but this one will have its own separate access to the playground area. So you keep it separated, so people going to the playground don't have to cut through the pool. I think it's better.
Thank you for doing that, I mean, appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions of the board members? All right, well then I'll accept the motion on this application. Mr. Mealy?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve application number 22:519, Troy Hills Village, 1480, Route 46, Block 718, Lot 12, minor site plan for installation of a playground area, fencing, walkway, picnic area, and parking.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Didich.
All right. Nora, could you call the roll?
Didich?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Von Aiken?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everybody, have a good night.
All right. As we have nothing else on the agenda, I'll accept the motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. We got it done just in time for you, Chairman.
Let me find out if I'm ready here. All right. Meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board, Monday, June 6, 2022, at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Didich?
Present.
Mr. Mealy?
Here.
Mr. Matt?
Present.
Mr. Napolitano?
Here.
Mr. Stenziel?
Here.
Mr. Von Aiken?
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore?
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Mr. Weiser, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Mr. Lagana.
All right, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this meeting is open to the general public. Are there any members of the public here that wish to speak to us on something that is not...
is not on our agenda at this time? Hearing and seeing none. We can move on and start the different applications that we have. Our agenda starts with application number 22:522 169 Johnson Road LLC, major soil-moving permit in conjunction with approved application for multifamily development. Is the counselor here?
Good evening.
For the record, Nicole Madziak, M-A-D-Z-I-A-K, of the law firm Dave Pittney, here this evening on behalf of the applicant. So we are here in connection with Block 200, Lot 8, which was approved or was part of an application for preliminary and final site plan that was approved by the planning board back in 2021. The application started in 2020 and was voted on in January of 2021, and the resolution memorializing the approval was handled on February 10 of 2021. The application was in connection with preliminary and final, preliminary and final major site plan and variance approval to construct an 87-unit multifamily development. We are here this evening seeking a major soil movement permit in connection with that development. I have with me this evening our engineer, Jamie Gerantano, who was also the engineer on the underlying application. We also have a representative of the applicant here in the event that there are questions that Jamie or I are unable to answer. So with that, we'd like to have our engineers sworn in and qualified as an expert in engineering.
Do you swear from the testimony about to give it be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
James Gerantano, G as in George, I U R I N as in Nancy, T as in Thomas, A N O. Office address is 54 Horst Hill Road, Cedar Knolls, New Jersey.
Counselor, could you please qualify the witness?
Sure. Can you please provide for the board your qualifications and background?
Yes, I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from NJIT. I've been working in the industry since 1994, both as a municipal engineer and as a site engineer for various developers. I've been qualified across the state, as far south as the city of Salem and as far north as Wood Cliff Lake, many places in between. My license is still in good standing. I'm the principal at Bowman Consulting Group.
And you've appeared before this particular planning board, correct?
Yes.
And you were previously accepted as an expert in civil engineering, correct?
That is correct.
Chairman? Are there any members of the board have any questions, further questions on this? There don't seem to be any questions of your qualifications.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just for the record, the property in question is Block 200, Lot 8. It's approximately 2.57 acres in area. It is an inclusionary development, which was previously approved, and the resolution was signed on February 10 of 2021. Project proposes to demolish the existing structure to make way for a new residential building. In order to construct this building, the floor plate has gotten bigger from the existing building that's on site, thereby necessitating 19,944 cubic yards of export from the site cut. That's a net number. A little bit of fill, we'll push a little bit of dirt around, but rest of it will have to be removed. We did receive several variances for the project, and those variances would remain as part of the underlying application. At this time, we haven't selected a contractor. The times of work will be in accordance with municipal requirements. We haven't established which contractor will be used as, I'm sorry, which equipment will be used, as we haven't selected a contractor at this time. However, upon selection, we will be meeting with the township engineer and having a pre-construction meeting with his office. With regard to routes for trucks entering and exiting the site, we envision wall traffic to be coming from Route 10 down Johnson Road, so minimal impact to local streets. We have already secured our soil erosion control certification for the project, and we also, in accordance with the requirements of that approval, have prepared a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which will be in place during demolition and while further construction.
And Mr. Gerantano, we're in receipt of a review letter dated April 26, 2022, from Mr. Liza, the municipal engineer. Many of these comments you have addressed at this point. There are a couple of comments that remain, including township council approval is required, and we will comply, correct?
Yes.
A pre-construction meeting must be held, and we will comply with that as well.
Yes.
And no ground disturbance shall take place until approved by the engineering office, and we can intend to comply with that as well, correct?
That is correct.
And?
We will also file a treaty permit, which the, the application was reviewed by the township pastor when it was approved previously.
There are also a couple of conditions related to required inspection fees and performance guarantee fees, which are consistent with the ordinance requirements and will comply with those as well, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that's all we have for our direction.
All right, any of our professionals?
Just a little quick comment on, it's, I see you got your SED permit. It's just a word of caution, residential neighborhoods nearby, it's going to be a decent amount of soil movement out there, dry, dusty days, follow the criteria.
Water.
Water for dust control.
Yes.
I don't know if you guys did any soil testing yet, if you have any rock there or not. Again, same thing, if there's a rock crusher on site, same thing, dust. And you are adjacent to the Malaportis Brook, so the proper soil erosion.
Which is all part of our SWF.
Yep. I just wanted to remind everyone of that.
And we will also maintain access to the Smooka Well House that goes through our property.
Yep. I don't have any other comments. That was just a housekeeping item there.
All right, do you have any issues?
We do not, as a planner, do not review these types of applications, so I have none.
All right, just, you have?
Thanks for asking.
Great expertise. Are there any members of the board have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time?
I guess just one. How much of this excavation is actually for the foundation of the building and how much for the site?
Most of it is for the site. Basically what's happening. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I do have a set of plans. These are on record, they're not exhibits, so it's, it's part of the public record.
Just reference the plans and...
Plans I'm referencing are the ones that are actually signed by the township. They're entitled preliminary or final major site plans, 169 Johnson Road LLC.
We have these.
Revised through June 7.
I believe we have these.
Yeah, we got half-size with their tickets, so.
I like half-size.
I do, too.
Would you like to go to Sheet 5 very quickly and show you what's happening is we're basically, we have to lower this whole back core of the property in order to make way for this building plate. With the building pushing forward, this whole site slopes down towards Johnson Road, so we have to watch our slopes coming up the driveway to get in the entry. So that's, that's what's creating this, and we have the tiered walls along the back to hold up the adjacent properties.
Okay.
That's all part of the prior application.
And I guess my understanding is that all we can do is recommend, this still has to go to council, I guess, because of magnitude, right? So, okay. Thank you.
We have to find that it's consistent with the master plan and recommend to the council that they approve. That's our job.
Thank you.
Are there other members of the public, of our board who have a...
Mr. Chairman, does this alter the timeline for completion of the project? Are you still basically on schedule?
We are, we're moving ahead as fast as we can. So if we could have been in the ground already, we would have. We filed our demolition permit, which we cannot get until we have the soil movement permit. So we are moving along. So the sooner this gets approved, the sooner we can start with the demolition and the excavation.
Thank you.
Any other members of the board have questions at this, at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Are there members of the public who have any questions of this witness at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor, you wish to move forward with?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and that's all we have for our witnesses this evening, and we believe that this major soil movement permit is consistent with the master plan, particularly because an element of that is including our portable units as part of the overall master plan within the housing element. We do believe the appropriate measures are being taken in order to control things like dust and just the soil erosion in general, since we have that permit in hand already and are, of course, going to be meeting with the township engineer at a pre-construction meeting to make sure that we are totally coordinated with the township as we move forward. So we would hope that this board would grant the recommendation to the council to approve.
Counselor, have we heard enough?
Yes.
I figured.
Nice summation.
All right, are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this at this time? Hearing and seeing none. In favor of this, this time, hearing and seeing none. I move that the evidentiary portion of this, a rule that portion, evidentiary portion of this case has been closed. And do I have somebody willing to move a motion that we recommend to the council that we have found that this fits our master plan?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dadij?
Yep, I move the motion to approve application number 22:522 169 Johnson Road LLC, Block 200, Lot 8, major soil-moving permit in conjunction with approved application for multifamily development.
Second, Mealy?
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dadij?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Matt?
Yes.
Mr. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mr. Stenziel?
Yes.
Mr. Von Aken?
Yes.
Chairman, I reckon. Uh, Dinsmore, sorry. That's Wednesday.
Yes, yes. Yes.
Thank you very much.
So you get to meet with the council next to get that done, so. All right, moving on to the very next item on our agenda, which I have. The next item on our agenda is application number 22:525 RRT 2 Campus LLC, 2 Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.20, major soil-moving permit in conjunction with approved application for multifamily development. Sounds familiar?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Dinsmore. Stephen Tomalak, coming in a little group on behalf of the applicant, RRT 2 Campus LLC. So if I may, Chairman, everything that prior applicant just said, this, this property's across the highway.
Okay.
It's on the corner, roughly on the corner of Campus Drive and Littleton. I have a veteran engineer. Where's Jamie on it? So Patty Ruskin is here this evening. Patty Ruskin was also the engineer of record when this came before the planning board, you know, a year or two years ago. She was previously qualified as an expert in civil engineering. She's appeared before this board and the zoning board and qualified before the zoning board as well. We would ask, we would ask that she be sworn in, and then we'll qualify her.
Do you swear from the testimony about to give it be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Patricia Ruskin, R-U-S-K-A-N, business address is 3 Mountain View Road in Warren, New Jersey.
Now, Patty, everything I said about your qualifications is accurate?
Correct.
Your license is still in good standing?
Is.
And you've testified before this board, the sister zoning board, as well as many, many other boards throughout the state?
I have.
We would ask that Ms. Ruskin's qualifications be, her expertise be recognized and accepted by the board.
Any questions by the board that I didn't think so? Fine, please proceed.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. As the board just heard by the other applicant from across the street, this is an inclusionary project. It was previously approved by this board, preliminary and final site plan. We omitted to ask for a major soil-moving permit recommendation back then, as did they. So now we're back. We're back for this board's recommendation so we can proceed to council on the major soil-moving permit, which is required to allow the development of this development. We have a bunch of permits in hand. Patty can go over what those are. We actually have a demolition contractor lined up. We have a contract, just, we just were waiting for either major soil-moving permit, maybe one DEP permit. Patty can talk about that, but otherwise, we're pretty much fully permitted and ready to go. So without further ado, Patty, can you give the board a summary of where we're at, why you need the major soil-moving permit, the routes of the trucks? So hopefully they will also find that this, so major soil-moving permit is consistent with the master plan and recommend it to the council.
Sure, just as a quick overview, the site itself is five acres in size. We, there's an existing office building on the site. It will be demolished in order to make way for the new housing development that was approved previously. The entire site will be disturbed as part of this application. The application includes the prior, the previously approved application includes, I wouldn't say significant, but soil moving on-site itself, and there is some export. But as a total, which your township requires, is a total moving of that soil. And what we're proposing is a total movement of 13,274 cubic yards, and that includes some that is staying on-site with the total export of 6,488 cubic, cubic yards of soil. The demolition itself, the building is part of the demo permit, but there is a pavement that will be removed and the building pad itself, and that makes that about 5,000 cubic yards of the total unto itself. We have three subsurface detention basins, which that is adding up to that total of soil moving on the site, as well as the existing detention basin that is there today will be reconfigured as part of the overall project. The site contractor, as you had heard, the site contractor has been selected. Demo will begin first. All the movement of the trucks will be via Route 10 and Dryden Road onto Campus Drive. We will not reuse Littleton Road as access for construction. We have all permits except for one DEP permit we're waiting for. It's a water main extension permit. We have soil erosion sediment control certification from Morse County Soil Conservation District. We have the TWA permit. We have the other local permits. We will be meeting with the township engineer once we have the soil-moving permit in hand with the contractor and to talk about the routes, talk about construction timing, what you need, the ordinance requirements, and the overall project schedule.
And if I can add to that, we also have a fully signed development and stormwater management rooms with the council, which are going to be recorded shortly. They haven't even sent in for reporting. And we also have the township approval of our, an easement that has to be amended because this property is connected with 1633 Littleton, the property on the corner. So that's already been reviewed and approved by the township attorney. So that's where we're at, Chairman. We're almost there. We're at the 95th yard line, and we're just trying to push this over the, over the end zone.
Okay. Mr. Canziano, you seem to have good thoughts on these things.
Well, you, I've already heard what I wanted to hear, and I think what this board wanted to hear is that the truck route is not going to be on Littleton Road. I just asked that, I don't know if this is an approval, but a recommendation that that be a condition of the recommendation, that they not use Littleton and use Dryden, Campus Drive for...
That's correct.
For the truck route.
We already have represented that that would be the case when it came before this board for preliminary and final.
Okay.
So we're sticking with that.
Okay. Any members of the board have any questions on this testimony at this time?
Just one, Chairman. So is it the position that the, the corner lot is going to be done separately for any soil movement that you need?
It really depends on, this, this soil movement is for 2 Campus. If anything is ever built in the future for 1633, that'll have to be dealt with separately.
Okay.
Any members of our board, any other professionals that have a comment or...
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman. There was a reference, I don't think that was provided, to the prior approval. Do you have that resolution number so it gets on your record?
And I was looking for it because, you know, the attorney from Dave Pittney had all the dates and years. I was like, she prepared for this?
Yeah. I want like to get into this resolution.
Yeah.
It's actually not a resolution, it's going to be a correspondence, so I was actually...
Yeah, I mean, I don't have it.
It's okay.
I can look on my phone.
We'll, we'll get ahold of it before the...
2516.
What was that, Nora? I'm sorry.
20516.
20... Two-zero...
Two-zero.
Five-sixteen.
And then I'll send you, if you don't have a copy of it, I'll...
That's fine. This is just for the purposes of the record, to make sure that we have that resolution approved. Thank you.
All right. No members of the board, no more questions from board here. Is there any members of the public who have questions on this application at this time hearing and seeing none? I assume that's your case.
That is, Chairman. Same, you know, it's like the Groundhog Day this evening, same exactly.
Understood.
And we do ask that the planning board allow us to proceed with this development, which, and this is a necessary step in that process.
Sure. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak in opposition of this case or application, hearing and seeing none? Any in favor of this application, hearing and seeing none? Move the evidentiary portion of the cases over, as adjourned, I should say, and we're finished. The, is there anybody willing to make a motion finding that this application should be recommended to the council and that it does not in any way hurt the master plan?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve application number 22:525, RRT Two Campus LLC, Two Campus Drive, Lot 202, Lot 3.20, major soil moving permit in conjunction with approved application for a multifamily development, and the condition as mentioned by Mr. Canziano.
Second, Politan.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dede.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Senzial.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Have a good evening.
You too. All right. Coming right along. If only the next one could be that fast. It won't. All right. Let me get my...
This one, we actually have to make a decision.
All right. Now we're calling up application number 22:513, Jagdish Patel, 90 and 103, Troy Meadows Road, block 763, lots 19, spot 01 and 19, spot 02, and C variance relief for a lot line revision.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Neill. Haven't seen you in a bit.
Yes. Joseph O'Neill, on behalf of the applicant. I asked the board's indulgence this evening. I've been having a bit of a problem with my back, so if I wince, it's not because somebody says something. This is an application adjusting a lot line. We're going to hear the proofs on this. Mr. Matarazzo is setting up the board. But the basic gist of this matter is the applicant seeks to control the property that's in front of their house. And that'll become clear when we talk about the application itself. So I'll get Mr. Matarazzo on that. I believe we have some waivers. Do we have some waivers on this?
Wisser, you have some waivers and things like that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Our report was dated May 10th, and we do wish to apologize. We were not able to get our completeness review in within the 45-day timeframe. That's our fault. We own that. So the application is deemed administratively complete. Having said that, there are a couple of items that we want to bring to your attention in terms of what was submitted versus checklist requirements. The first one, and I direct people to page two of our report, is that the, the 200-foot list that was included on the plan was dated and too old for use. Council, have you updated that and provided an updated notice?
Yes, we did.
Thank you. Secondly, there was a question about the Highlands exemption determination. We deferred this item to the zoning officer, who is not here this evening. Has that been addressed?
I believe it is because it's the residential nature, the single-family residential nature of the application. But if it's not, we will address that.
Thank you. Moving on to page three of our report, all of the items there, and it's item 14, existing and proposed topo contours on the site. Item 15, the location width of any abutting streets. Item 16, the location dimensions of profiles of proposed streets. Item 18, existing and proposed utility services. Item 19, existing and proposed storm drain. Item 22, location and design of fences. And item 24, construction details and specifications. Applicant has asked for a waiver of those items, and we have no objection. And that is, that is all we have on the completeness and waiver section.
All right. Do I have a motion approving the waivers in the planner's report?
Motion, Matt.
So do I hear a second?
Second, Mealy.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, the waivers are granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would introduce Mr. Matarazzo. He happens to want...
Do you swear from the testimony about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Frank Matarazzo, M-A-T-A-R-A-Z-Z-O, 575 Route 46 West, Fairfield, New Jersey.
Counsel, can you please?
Sure.
Mr. Matarazzo, will you give the board, please, the benefit of your experience?
Yes. I have a Bachelor of the Science in Civil Engineering, MNGIT, also a Bachelor of the Science in Land Surveying, also from MNGIT, and a license as a professional engineer, surveyor, and planner in the state of New Jersey.
I would present Mr. Matarazzo as an expert for engineering purposes this evening.
Are there any questions on the expert hearing and seeing none?
Thank you. If I'd like to just, one further set of questions. Mr. Matarazzo, you are familiar with the master plan and local ordinances here in Parsley, right?
That's correct.
You've had an opportunity to compare those to the application being presented before the board?
Yes.
So for that reason, I'd like to present Mr. Matarazzo also as a planner this evening.
All right. Are there any questions by members of the board, or counselor, or others?
Just one. Did you get your renewal in in time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Counsel, the only thing is when he engages in his testimony as an engineer and that the record will allow the public and the board to cross-examine, and then we can move into the planning.
That's fine.
That way we keep the record clean between the two specialties.
Sure.
I much prefer to do it that way.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So all that being said, Mr. Matarazzo, can you introduce the board, please, to the application? We are moving a lot line, as I described, and keeping control of the property in front of the house in the name of this, on the right.
Yes, if you want, I can mark that.
Let's mark that, say, one.
So what is it that you're marking?
I'm marking a map called Minor Subdivision Map, 93 Troy Meadow Road, dated December 30th, 2021.
So it's a colorized map, are you?
Colorized map of the same drawing that's submitted. So the site's located on the southwestern side of Troy Meadow Road, just opposite Brookside Court. The site's located in the R3 Residential Zone District and is surrounded by single-family homes. The subject application involves two parcels, Lot 1901 and 1902. 1901 is the, I just point at it, it's the one with the house that's under construction closest to Troy Meadow Road. 1902 is the lot that appears to be sort of a flaglock configuration with the long driveway on the easterly side, or the left side of the property as you're looking at the drawing, with the house located to the rear. The lots, although technically conforming to the zone, are irregularly shaped, as we just outlined. Outlined the lot line. On this exhibit, I have the line marked in black going around the perimeter of the two lots. This line that I'm pointing to here is the lot, current lot line of 1901. As you can see, 1902, which is the lot in the back, has a conforming frontage along Troy Meadow Road of 100 feet, as well as Lot 1901 has a conforming frontage of 104 feet. And you can see that that, that stem or that foot of the flag, let's call it, extends or protrudes approximately halfway through Lot 1901. Okay, so what we're proposing is to slightly move that lot line to the left or easterly. We're proposing to move it 25 feet, which will create a 75-foot wide frontage for 1902 and a 125-foot frontage for Lot 1901. Part of this application is also that the owner of Lot 1901, which is the house that's under construction, would like to construct a circular driveway in the front of the property. That slight shift in the lot line of 25 feet provides ample room for the construction of a circular driveway in front of 1901. So with that one variance that we are requesting, I believe that this variance can be granted under a C2 criteria?
We've moved to planning here, right, from engineering?
Oh, sorry.
We like to keep them separate.
Yeah, that's, everything else is conforming and unchanged?
That's correct.
I have no further questions on the engineering portion. Any members of the board that have engineering questions of the engineer at this time on this?
Well, I got more of a survey question. So obviously, just because of the numbers, these two lots were once combined, one lot, correct?
It appears so.
When were they subdivided, do you know?
That I don't know.
It's just a very unusual shape to have, the way they were subdivided.
Honestly, it looks like that they tried to subdivide it and not physically create a flaglock, 1902, and gave a technical frontage of 100 feet.
It looks like somebody gave them the ordinance, okay?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
But you can tell it's, we created two irregularly shaped lots, although they fully conform. So what we're trying to do is make them a little bit more regularly shaped. Not fully regular, but a little bit better.
Okay. On that basis, I mean, obviously, nothing's going to change from perspective of somebody on the street, right? Just because the houses are going to be where they're going to be, they're in the lots. Why aren't you going all the way and at least making Lot 1901 go the other 40 feet and make Lot 1901 rectangular shaped and have a true flaglot next to it?
Well, the neighbors, this is the agreement that the neighbors came to. They got together and decided to do it like this. We have one of the neighbors in the audience with us this evening. He's got limited English, which is one of the reasons I didn't bring him up. But his daughter's here interpreting for him. But this is just the agreement that they decided between the two of them. And it's, it's illustrative of the problems that happen when you create these odd lots to, you know, get a subdivision of right, where it's really just creating an odd problem.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's against, like, in planning purposes, you're supposed to make them as regularly shaped as possible, correct?
Well, I, we're not doing planning yet. All right. I'll ask you that question later.
Mr. Von Aken?
Sure. Are there any utilities or any such items that are in that portion which are to be moved for the back portion of the lot?
No, there's actually a sanitary sore easement. It's located right about there. And that's for a sanitary sore connection from 1901 to the street, crossing that little foot of 1902, which that'll remain.
Okay.
Other members of the board, Mr. Napolitano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just to clear up, 1901 and 1902 are not owned by the same person?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Canziano?
Yeah, just, so what's the history on the house on 1901 that's under construction that looks like it's dormant? What's the history there?
Well, they received plot plan approval, started constructing the building. I'm not sure why they haven't completed it at this point, to be honest with you.
And I bring it up because I just wanted to comment on the, the newer minor development stormwater. A plot plan approved today would require, would meet under that criteria and require a C-25 dry well. Any objection to coordinating with township engineer and adding, if, if one is not already part of that plot plan approval, adding to the appropriately sized dry well?
Sure. Actually, there was a house on this property that got demolished as part of this new construction from 1901. So at that time, the dry well wasn't required because of the impervious coverage. But with the increase in impervious coverage due to the circular driveway, it was required, we'll put one in.
Okay. And then also on 1902, it looks like the existing shed is, doesn't meet the setback requirement of six feet.
Correct.
I just defer to the planner on, on that.
Yes, we, it's not mentioned, and it was not clear to us what the, that actual dimension is. For anybody who's following along, this is on page five of our report. Let's, both the side yard and rear yard setbacks on 1902, it looks like the shed does not conform. So that would require you to either relocate the shed or request relief from that requirement.
I'm not sure if you have to relocate. There's, there's an existing shed in this back left corner. That's closer than the six feet of the property line. I'm not sure if we want to relocate that shed or...
Let's defer that question for a minute.
If I could consult with the client.
Sure. We have planning testimony to come, so...
Yeah.
Well, let me get through this here. Any other members of the board or professionals that have any questions of the engineer at this time? Any members? Oh, Mr. Dede.
Mr. Chairman, yeah. Good question. Could you give me some more about the fence around it? On the one side, we say the PVC fence will remain. The other side, it says six-foot high fence will be created, right? So is that, is that existing fence or...
I believe, believe you referred to the fence that's along this common lot line in the back.
Right, yep.
Yeah. That's going to remain?
And that's not six feet high, or is that also six feet high?
That, I believe, may be a six-foot-high PVC, solid PVC fence.
Okay.
The fence that was shown as being proposed along this new common lot line, we can eliminate that in the application.
Okay, that's good.
But the other one is to remain.
If it were to be over six feet, we would have required another variance.
Yeah.
So, if I may ask, on our report on page six, on footnote eight, we have items B, C, and D that addresses the fence issue. Can you tell us which, which element you're going to remove from the proposed plan?
Can you tell us which, which element you're going to remove from the proposed plan?
We're going to remove the proposed fence that we show along the new subdivision line, along the remaining, call it, front yard between lots 1901 and 1902. We'll remove that proposed fence from the application.
Okay, and just help me out for clarity. Is that item B or C or D?
Okay.
Actually, it looks like C, but I want to make sure that we're correct.
Well, C is to remain. The neighbor's PVC fence to remain, that's, that's this fence back here.
Okay.
The new fence. Yeah, the new fence is going to be eliminated.
The new fence, so the second line in item C? Okay, and, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, just one more item. Since counsel, you're going to be conferring with your client, it appears that the fences that are going to remain sort of meander on and off the two lots. They really need to be on whosoever lot owns the fence. So we would recommend that those fences be relocated to the appropriate owner's lot. And that's something that I think you probably need to discuss with your client.
I will. I will.
Thank you. All right. Any other?
I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Counsel, you'll need a new deed for each of the new lots if this is approved.
Correct.
Setting forth the meets and bounds of their respective lots, and those will be filed with the county and provided to the engineer for review as well.
Provided to the engineer and yourself for approval.
Correct. Thank you, sir. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on this time? If you could come forward and state your name and address. And Mr. O'Neill, if you could make sure they have a microphone so that we can hear them?
There's one laying down, there's one laying down right there.
Sit.
Thank you. I'm Janice Phanam, my husband Mike Phanam is here.
Please, please move the microphone so we can get it on the record.
Counsel, if you can give Mr. Madarazza the microphone, because he has to answer questions, correct?
Okay. Want to go over again, start over?
Yes, please, please.
I'm Janice Phanam, my husband Mike Phanam is here. Where are the neighbors? Please pull the microphone closer to you. Where are the neighbors to the other side of the flag lot, okay? And there was a question before how this all subdivision happened. Well, Mr. and Mrs. Kowalski, that lived there forever, okay, decided to subdivide their, their property. And I'm sure there was many meetings about it, but it was a done deal because they had 200 feet of road frontage, and they were, that's why it's so irregular, is because that, they figured out a way to make 100-foot road, road frontage for the people in the back and 100-foot road frontage for the new, the new house here. So that's why it is. So it has greatly impacted us, but we had no say because it, at the time, it was approximately 20 years ago, every gray hippie, it was, it met all the, all the, all the rules and regulations, okay? So I just wanted to clear that up because there seemed to be, like, no one knew how that happened.
It's good to know the provenance of the problem.
Okay, and so I'll have to leave because I'm extremely nervous. I'd like to start off by saying that we absolutely hate being here tonight, not for you guys, but for the reason that we're here. We have a very good relationship with our neighbors that want to do this minor subdivision, and this is not how we wanted to meet our new neighbors if they're here. But we are being put into this position. We understand that Mr. Patel wants to sell 25 feet.
Excuse me, this is actually a time for questions on the engineering testimony. And the way it works is you can ask questions of the engineer at this time, then when he stands up and provides planning testimony, you can then ask questions of the planning testimony. And then once the application has basically rested their case to, to a degree, you can then make statements either in favor of or opposed to.
All right, all right, so I'll jump forward, I have a question.
Yes.
Because this negatively affects us. In the planning, the construction, the zoning of this new property, well, let me back up 20 years, the planning, the construction, and the zoning of the first subdivision, and that property was raised three to four feet, that made an imposition on us. Okay, fast forward 20 years, this property has been raised over 10 feet, and then the house was built up. So how is this driveway, now, now they're going from 100 feet road frontage to 125 on a 10-foot-high incline, okay? That, when they're, when they go in their circular driveway, engineering speaking wise, how will their headlights not glare into our house? Is that engineering, is that planning, is that zoning, is that construction? Call it what you want, but it affects us. So my nice little speech will just...
Fair question, fair question, you know?
I'm not trying to be upset, but I'm extremely nervous, and the scars are here, okay? The town failed us, not any other neighbor around, us.
Well, the, the house is currently under construction.
Yes, it's a beautiful house.
It's, the grating around that, that house is fairly in line with what was there prior.
Oh, no.
It's not a 10-foot-high change in grating.
I have pictures. I didn't have them.
Maybe the height of the house, but not the grating around.
Wait, well, now we have the question, engineer question. How high can a house, a residential house be in specific?
According to this zone, it is 35 feet or 2 and 1/2 stories.
It is awful.
Okay, how come there's three levels to this house?
Here's the neighbor.
It's not a 3-story house.
Oh, there's three steps. We don't think...
There might be architectural features on this attic level, but it's not a third floor.
No.
Would you please speak into the microphone?
I stare at it every day.
We're talking to the engineer, actually, because he's the one who's holding it, like, at waist high.
Okay. The house that was originally there, a little square ranch, we couldn't see it over my garage because we were all flat. The street has a gentle decline, okay? That house towers over everything because the ground was added, the basement or foundation was put in at a higher level, and then, of course, from there, the house goes up. It's a gorgeous house, and I don't want to complain and meet my neighbors this way.
Ma'am?
But the town is doing this.
How far back from the curb is your house?
130 feet.
From the curb?
That's the beginning of my house, yes.
Your house is 130 feet back from the curb?
Yes.
Okay, so you should be well, well behind.
When they pull in their driveway and they go back...
The existing driveway? The long driveway?
The long driveway is next to us.
Right.
We're talking about a circular driveway that's already 10 feet higher, okay, than it used to be.
Okay, have you, have you looked at the packet of pictures and things like that that were submitted with the case? Nora, did we, well?
Coming here earlier? No, I didn't.
Oh, you didn't? Okay. Because we've, we've got a series of pictures here, and it does show a bit of a rise.
Oh, no.
10-foot seams a bit.
I know, it does.
A bit more than what the pictures depict. All right.
If I may ask, to get back to the fence issue, along the westerly side of the lot where the house is, I guess that's Point 01, where the house is being built, there's, there's a fence that runs down along the property line?
This way?
Yes. Is there a proposed fence that's running down the property line?
There was an existing fence there. No, our plan shows construct new 6-foot-high fence.
So you're gonna, the applicant is proposing to construct a 6-foot-high fence made out of?
PVC, wasn't it?
Solid PVC pipe.
So that would appear to me to screen the lighting.
Well, I was going to suggest that.
What we're looking to remove is this, this portion here.
There is no fence there.
We were proposing it.
We were proposing to put one there, but we're removing it.
Well, that's for the people in the back. We're talking about when you enter a driveway and your headlights go like this and going like that. So I was going to say, engineering speaking, okay? The easiest way to answer this is to, don't change anything, okay? Because the zoning laws say you need 100 feet of footage, is that correct? Am I wrong? Or is this, okay? So now we go from 75, we go from 100 to 75 to 125 so that they can put in their driveway, okay? We also did an awful lot of work when we first came here, okay? But we stayed...
So you're getting into commentary at this point?
Yeah, yeah, I know that. So I was going to recommend, the easiest thing is to be the way it is.
We want to stick with questions of the engineer at this time.
And I was also going to say to do a...
I think she's asked a question, if we can provide a fence.
To do a fence. Well, I was going to say two things. To provide a fence which would alleviate the headlights shining into our house, since everything else is a done deal, okay? And also, how about rows, plant some tall, fast-growing trees, which we had to do, okay, to give us some privacy back in the back, okay? So it's very possible, yeah, it takes a little bit of time, but we seem to all be patient. That would be two things.
Counselor, are you willing to have a discussion with your client about providing some sort of privacy?
Lots of experience and would love to be...
I'll talk to the client about the plantings, but the fence is already a yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Ma'am, if, if, just so we're clear, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, can you just simply point to where you think the plantings ought to be?
Would you say along this line up to about?
Well, yeah, along, along this, along this line. But you know, you've got, along the side of this driveway is a, is a small, little incline that allows water to come back to a basin, has to be right around here.
Evergreen.
So there's very, so you would have to be careful where you plant it, okay? All right, so it wouldn't have to be in water because...
Well, we'll assume that the applicant's professionals will be able to appropriately plant them. But where, I, I just wanted to be clear on where you thought they should go, so.
Along that line.
Counselor, go back to his client.
Somewhere between your windows and the house.
Well, there, there are already some evergreens as seen in the pictures.
There are some, but some fell too.
But they're very thin.
With, with a few storms on our driveway.
We could probably infill there.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add on the fence that for it to be compliant with the ordinance, a 6-foot-high fence is not allowed in the front yard. So the 6-foot-high fence would ha, can, has, has to be at or behind the, the building, the first part of the building. So it starts, looks like approximately 50 feet back from the, from the right away. Just to be clear.
Planting buffer would be preferable than from an engineering...
Yeah, right above your fingers.
Actually, we, we identify that line as a 10-foot side yard, this way.
Yeah, but it still runs from property line, property line.
The front, I think you're really skewing the ordinance intent if you're going to measure from there, but you have to, the fence would be set back to avoid the front yard, set back from the right away.
Okay.
The distance to where the, the first part of the building is.
So you can't have a, a fence on the side yard. You can't have that.
You can't have it in front, past the front of the building, let's say.
It'd be, it'd be 6 feet high.
It could be 4 feet high. It can be 6 feet high.
Beyond the front of the building. It could be 4 feet high, but not 6.
Well, 4 feet's not going to work, and if you can change 70, 100 to 75 to 125, you can't change a fence.
I, I don't think to completely throw this up into the air, but you said your house is 8 to 10 feet below this property, is that what you said?
Yes, that's correct.
So I wouldn't go 4 foot if that were...
Because when they go up into their driveway on an incline, their headlights are going to shine up, okay?
Yes, but you're down below the fence.
I didn't bring my photographer's license with me.
They have photos and give them, well, we'll, we'll have...
We'll talk about, provide you a copy.
Do you have any further questions of the engineer at this time?
No, I don't, no.
All right. Counselor, we'd like to take a break for a few minutes.
Please, just two minutes, so I can...
All right. I move we adjourn for, what, five minutes or declare we have a five-minute break at this time, so anybody needs to get up, we will re...
Counselor, are you ready?
Yes, thank you. All right, let me, Nora, would you call the roll, please? We are starting, what does it look like, 20 of mine?
Didich?
Present.
Neely?
Here.
Math?
Present.
Napolitano?
Here.
Denzial?
Here.
Bonakin?
Here.
Dinshire?
Yeah.
All right, sir.
All right, so we were able to consult with our clients, and thank you very much for that opportunity. We consulted with the clients who are here and the clients who are not here, the neighbors. First, the history of the shed. The story on the shed is it was there when they bought it, 2011, and apparently it could not survive a move, so we were forced to ask for a variance of about 2-foot setback on that existing shed. The fence question is, we're going to relocate the fence, so it's all on one property line, it's under control, and we'll take care of that. Provide any other maintenance requirements in the agreement that's been struck between the parties through the subdivision that's already existing, though we don't anticipate any modification necessary for that. And lastly, regarding the plantings, we are willing to provide additional plantings to infill that view. We understand that there's some deterioration in existing planning. What we would propose, rather than do something here, is leave it to, leave it to the discretion of Parks and Forestry. We'll handle that in the field, just do what they want. Frankly, that's worked out best over the years anyway, because they always come out with suggestions anyway, so.
Yes.
We'll just do it their way, just say we'll do it their way.
What you're representing to everybody here is that you're going to work with Parks and Forestry.
Or for Mr. Walsh to do what he says.
To create a buffer that would remediate to some extent any possible light pollution that might...
Of the effect on the house.
Yes.
Target is the effect on the house, not the, not the entire property.
Right.
So we will, we will mitigate the effect on the house. And we already spoke to the fence, we're going to leave that side yard, we're thinking it's a side yard fence there, we think that that should alleviate that problem with the So that was it on that.
All right, now you have some planning testimony.
Yes, we do. Mr. Madarazza, before we all cut you off.
And the application proposes one variance, which is lot frontage for Lot 1902, and we're asking for a second variance for a pre-existing shed located in the left rear corner of Lot 1902.
That's rear and side yard variance.
Rear and side yard variance.
Counsel, do we have those dimensions at this point, or?
We are going to give those dimensions. We have some confidence?
Yes, we have a dimension of approximately 2 feet to the sideline and approximately 3 feet to the rear yard. Those are scale dimensions at this point.
We're pretty confident in that, though.
Those 2 feet to the side yard, 3 feet to the rear yard, just, sorry?
2 feet to the, what would be the easterly sideline, side yard line, and 3 feet to the rear yard. Two feet to the, what would be the easterly sideline, side yard line, and three feet to the southerly property line, lot 1902.
If I neglected to say that, that's been in existence since 2011.
Again, with that being that the shed has been in existence for so long, there has been no detriment to the surrounding areas with the location of the shed. So we believe that leaving it where it is would not pose any detriment to this own plan. With regard to the front yard, lot frontage variance, I believe that this can be granted using the C2 criteria, whereby granting of a variance to allow departure from the zoning ordinance would advance the purposes of municipal land use law, and that the benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment. This application advances two purposes of the MLUL. Purpose, paragraph A, which is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state. By adjusting this lot line and creating the circular driveway, this will give the appearance of a more standard-shaped lot for lot 1901. It would also ensure that that small parcel of land being conveyed from one lot to the other will be properly maintained, not become overgrown or neglected. Purpose, or paragraph I of the MLUL is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. And that's similarly with the granting of the lot frontage variance. Again, we're creating a more regularly shaped lot for 1901 and 1902. With regards to the negative criteria, the granting of the front lots, the lot frontage variance will not impact any adjoining properties in this area. It is a readjustment of an invisible line. Once created and a new driveway installed, it will still visually seem as it was always intended to be on this property, where it would still appear that there's a rectangular-shaped lot for 1901. So I believe that the benefits do outweigh any detriment in this case.
Do you see any detriment at all?
No, none whatsoever.
I have no further questions for this witness.
All right, members of the board of questions, the planner on the planning testimony, Mr. Neely?
It appears that there is a Belgian block continuum on the south side of Troy Meadow Road. Will the applicant have to put in a sidewalk along the frontage of that property?
I don't believe so, no. Nothing about a sidewalk was ever discussed.
It has not been proposed?
No.
No other comment from any of the professionals regarding that?
No, there's no requirement on this, on our subdivision for a sidewalk.
No, it's Belgian block, but is there any sidewalk on?
I don't see any on that one picture on that page.
You don't wanna, well... Okay.
I'm not sure there's any on that whole street, though.
Right.
Yeah.
So to clarify, that is not required, a sidewalk is not required. Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the board, Mr. DePaolo?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just taking a look at the survey again here. It seems that with the new driveway and the movement of the lot line, there's gonna be more impervious coverage in that front area.
Yeah.
And then it also seems that the driveway to the 1902's driveway is lower than that is, as well as the property next to it. Will that driveway or property next to it see any more water than they have in the past?
Well, one of the comments that Mr. Kenjiano suggested was that we provide a dry well for the additional stormwater runoff.
And that's gonna take care of that excessive amount of impervious coverage?
Correct.
And then, I'm trying to say this question the right way. So the 1901 is going to gain lot coverage, and 1902 is going to lose lot coverage, I'm assuming, right? Yes. Are they both aware of that, you know, that changes their percentages of what's covered and what's not covered? They're both aware of that, okay. So let's just say 1902 wants to build a deck. Well, now they have less, you know, property to do that. They're aware, they've all been made aware of this.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Matarazzo, I'm sorry. I'm having trouble, I guess, understanding in terms of testimony that moving the lot line with, creating a variance that doesn't exist now, for the purposes of making lot 1901 more rectangular, is accomplished by only taking a small piece of that land. Is there a technical reason why the driveway could not have been accommodated on the existing lot 1901?
We actually did look at that, and it was just too sharp of a turn to completely fit within that 100-foot frontage.
Okay.
They also wanted the more control of the property. So they didn't want that 100-foot sticking out in front of their property. That was an issue also.
Well, I could totally respect that in which case, but I mean, I'm having trouble where you're taking part of it, and not all of it, when you have an easement running right through it with the sewer line for this lot right on there and not squaring it off. I mean, if we're gonna give a variance, why not go all the way?
They wouldn't agree to it. The parties couldn't come to that agreement. This is the agreement that they kicked.
Okay, well, I'm gonna have trouble approving this, then. If you can expand a little bit about the driveway, the technical nature, and why the circular driveway is important, then maybe I'll change my mind. And that this is necessary to accommodate that circular driveway, then, you know, that may change where I'm standing on this.
Well, one of them was aesthetics. We wanted to try and have the circular driveway centered on the house. If we tried to construct that circular driveway all on that existing 100-foot frontage, it would be centered on the house. Also, just the, it was awfully tight radius to get a circular driveway within that 100-foot frontage.
So from your testimony, you're saying that the radius needs require more land that's available currently?
That combined with wanting to center the circular driveway with the front of the house, not have it offset.
All right, and...
It's also got utility poles there, excuse me.
There is a utility pole there, so again, you're trying to fit that circular drive in that.
Oh, right there. I got it. Okay, so the utility pole, understood. And is a circular driveway safer than a regular driveway from a safety standpoint, because you're not backing out onto Troy Meadows Road?
Absolutely. You have an opportunity to pull out head-on or forward onto the main road with the circular driveway, as opposed to backing out onto the roadway. Provides better sight distance for a vehicle exiting the property both left and right.
So if I understand what you just said correctly, that transferring this land allows the construction of a much safer driveway for the one lot?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Mr. DePaolo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just adding on to that, though, the driveway that's being shown here is more than adequate at the garage section to make a turnaround. It seems as if the circular driveway is benefit is either to fit a large number of vehicles or for aesthetics. How many vehicles are we talking about here?
Well, the number of vehicles in the house, I'm gonna speak for my clients, because I'll ask her to come up and correct me if I make a mistake. But there are not a great number of people living in the house, but they do have a large extended family that they plan on accommodating upon occasion. Would like to accommodate the older members of the family with the circular drive. So that's why you'd wanna have the sidewalk come straight from the front door right to the circular driveway, and not have to go through the garage or whatever. Exactly right.
And just one more thing, with regard to the section of the driveway that's in the new part of the property, are you still going to be able to meet within that six-foot side yard variance to the other property? Your driveway has to be six feet away from the property?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is it six or five?
Five.
It might be five.
You're right.
It's five.
All right. That's my question.
If you put a shed on it, it's six.
All right. Other numbers? Mr. Weiser, you have some questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, Counselor, address you to page five of our report, where we have a number of items where the information has not been provided. Pardon me, you've addressed the shed issue. And I think one of the board members spoke to aggregate area covered by any accessory buildings. And then we also have some building coverage issue now that you have amended the plan, and we have not seen the amended plan, we just got it this evening. Is the, do all of the coverages conform?
That's my understanding, isn't it? Mr. Matarazzo, we're conforming on coverage?
Yes, you mean...
Building impervious, everything.
Well, there's under coverage, it's building and impervious, and then under accessory structures, the one, two, three, fourth item down, minimum aggregate area covered by.
So what we have in our zoning chart, under building coverage, proposed lot 1901 will have a 29.51% building coverage.
Is it 1901?
I'm sorry?
That's impervious.
I'm sorry. Building coverage of 15%. For 1902, that building coverage is 8.34% proposed. That's just the principal building. So the aggregate would be, including the shed, would be slightly higher than that 8.34%, so it would be well, well below 30%.
Okay, and then under maximum lot impervious coverage, for the adding of the circular driveway, gets us to how much?
29.51% for lot 1901.
But that's the number you had before the plan revision, is it the same number?
Which, which plan revision?
If that says it, the last plan.
You said you delivered a set of revised plans on Friday?
No.
You didn't say that?
You're thinking of a different application.
Okay.
What are your soil moving progress?
Apologies. Okay, that being said, that conforms, can you give us the height of the shed?
No, I couldn't.
Is it one-story?
It's definitely one-story.
Is it less than 15 feet?
I would say so, yes.
Okay. The fences... What I would ask you, given the fact that there has been a change, are you confident that all of the fences conform?
Yes, now, the fence that we were discussing earlier along this common lot line between 1901 and 1902, that existing fence is all on lot 1902. In this corner here, that fence is one foot south of the property line. And in this corner here, that fence is .8 feet south of the property line. Along this, let's call it the stem portion of lot 1902, it does encroach onto 1901 by 1.3 feet. So this existing lot line, the neighbor's fence to remain, is clear of the property line. But the new fence that we're proposing along the easterly property line between lots 1901 and 1902, that will be six inches onto lot 1901.
Okay.
Now that's all the questions I have.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I have another question. Mr. Matarazzo, I'm looking at the calculations for impervious, and on lot 19.02, you have proposed driveway 394. Where's the proposed driveway in that?
Yeah, that's not correct.
Oh. Okay. Yeah, 'cause I couldn't find it on the plan. All right, thank you.
Any other questions by members of the board on the planning testimony here?
I just wanted to be clear that the fence will still need a fence permit from zoning, that this approval does not give approval to the fence. It's still, it's intended that it be compliant with the zoning, and a fence permit will still need to be sought from zoning.
So they'll be working with all of our professionals on making sure that...
Yeah, I did that for you, Ms. Vealy, because it will end up in front of her, and so that it's not ambiguous. It's intended that the fence be compliant with zoning, and they will need a fence permit.
It seems so. Any other items you wish to address at this moment?
That concludes our formal presentation.
All right. Are there any members of the public who have questions of the plan on his planning testimony? Hearing and seeing none at this time, we're gonna ask for comments, yes. Is there anybody that would like to come up before the board and make comments, either in favor or opposed to this application at this time? If they could come up to the microphone, we actually have... Okay.
Can I ask, did we address your issues? I don't think that's necessary. Put it to the chair.
If you're gonna address their issues, they're either gonna jump up and say, "That's not quite right," or they're gonna say...
No, I'm gonna say we tried to address all their issues. We think we've done so, we think we've identified the problems that they have, and we'll be able to work through that, both with the fence and working with Mr. Walsh and his team. I think this application is pretty simple, if you live in a house, and someone looks out the window and says, "Now what's the neighbor doing on that section of the property?" You understand the motivations behind this application. Just a simple, I thank the board for their time and hope they vote in favor of the application.
All right. Then I move to close the evidentiary portion of this case at this time. And what I'd actually like to do at this point in time is actually ask for comments from the board on this case, so that... from the board on this case, because there are some contentious items that I would like to get on the record as to what we are thinking as we go through this. So do I have a volunteer to start the discussions? Mr. Bonak, please.
Yes, certainly. So, you know, flag lots are really intended to have a post and a banner. There's extra portion at the bottom, you know, I guess that's an issue of the past, which I wish, I really wish we could have resolved on this application. The two property owners aren't willing to come to that concession. You know, that troublesome for me, not as troublesome as what happened here to begin with, though. I think that the work that you've done to make concessions with the neighbor, I appreciate that, and I appreciate them coming out to voice those concerns, so I appreciate that. The other thing, which I guess is not relevant necessarily at the time, is how the heck did all that soil get on this property, rise it up that high without a major soil movement permit? But again, that's not part of this application. So with the many concerns that I have, I think this actually does improve the situation without any major detriment, so I'll be going ahead and providing my approval here.
Do I have any other comments by members of the board on their thoughts? Just about.
Whereas I do not like creating a variance where none exists now, without improving something else, I recognize that the lots are in the position they are, the building locations aren't going to change, and by moving this, by moving the lot line on that frontage, we create the opportunity to create a safer driveway across the frontage. And for that reason, I'd be willing to support this, although my preference would have been, had it gone and eliminated the whole rectangle in the front and created a true flag lot.
All right. Any other comments, Mr. De Deech?
It's kind of a repeat of other comments, but yeah, I would also have, would have preferred the, if we could have made it more proper flag or flag lot and that, the proper rectangular lot for 1901. But I think it's a step in the right direction, hopefully over the next few years, we can move it further, I would think. So with that, I think I'm okay with that, yeah, thank you.
Any other members of the board have any more comments at this time, or would I like, would somebody wish to approve?
Just something quickly, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to say I appreciate the applicant addressing the neighbor's concerns about adding some trees, and, you know, it is a pain to have lights shining in your house all night long, and hopefully this helps out, just to make sure that the native trees and not some, in basin type, but you'll work with the forest.
Forestry, always takes care of that. Is somebody willing to stand forward and put a motion of approval, for approval on this?
Do you have the conditions, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, subject to...
Mr. Chairman, for application 22:513, J. Deesh Patel, 90 and 103 Troy Meadow Road, Block 763, lots 19.01 and 19.02, see variance for lot line revision. I motion to approve...
There was two, there ended up being two variances, the shed.
Well, so... Yeah, I move to approve the variance for the existing structure on the basis that it has existed for some time and has caused no apparent detriment, and moving it would be unreasonable hardship. And a variance for the lot line revision, because whereas it does create a variance for lot frontage for one lot, it improves the safety and planning compliance of the other, of Lot 19.01. So for those reasons, I move to approve it, with the one condition that...
I have a couple, if I can...
Okay, a couple, so...
Yep, so you'll have to apply for a fence permit.
Sure.
You'll add a drywell as part of stormwater management. You will submit new deeds for Lot 1901 and 1902 with meet and bounds description, subject to the board engineer and the board attorney's approval. You will add landscaping along the driveway of 1902.
Subject to...
Subject to the approval regarding height and species with our arborist shade tree And that's all I have, those are the three.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's my motion.
That's your motion, do I... Is there a second?
Second, De Deech.
All right, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
De Deech?
Yes.
Neely?
No.
Matt?
Yes.
De Paul De Paul?
Yes.
Stenzel?
Yes.
Von Aiken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, have a nice evening.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks to the board, I thought that was very good of everybody to pay attention and get to the root of the matter, so thank you all, and thank our professionals. So is there anything else that we need to deal with tonight, Nora?
No, there is not.
Professionals have anything we need to deal with?
Not mine, we're...
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Anybody who doesn't want to go?